10:19, it's 6:00 PM. Could we please stand for the Pledge of Allegiance?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you very much. I get a motion for Treasury Warrant 15 in minutes.
Second.
Okay. Thank you, all in favor?
Aye.
And there are no minutes tonight. For 6:00 PM, we have a poll hearing, and I, as you can see, there's a swearing-in coming up, but we are waiting for one last member of the Board of Selectmen who is hopefully four minutes away. So is anybody here for the poll hearing? Come on over, just say thank you. Welcome.
Hi, how are you? Very good, thank you.
Could you give us your name and the title and why you're here?
I am Jay Lucia from National Grid.
All right, thank you. Hereby open the hearing.
We are replacing a tree guy that has fallen down, so we need to replace it with a pole, and we end up with a wire across the street from pole one to support pole one.
So it actually fell down? Did it?
Honestly, I'm not 100% sure. I read the notes because I didn't actually do this one myself, but it said the tree had fallen down maybe a year ago.
Okay.
So we're getting around to replacing the support structure for the pole line that's there.
Okay. So we have, you have in front of you two different recommendations. One was just updated, which was the one that Mike just gave us, so the official recommendation from our DPW is that they just ask that the pole be installed at least four feet from the edge of the pavement on the southern side of jury.
Yeah, probably because, I know that because I'm doing all the Rutland stuff for the most part now.
Yeah.
But whoever picked up this one for me, because I was out a little bit over the holidays, didn't know that.
They didn't know the process?
So we'll just make sure, no, I'll just make sure it's staked four feet off the roadway for you.
Okay, so you, sorry, you're going to move the stake for us?
Yes.
Okay.
I'll actually go and make sure, probably tomorrow, that the stake is at four feet.
Okay. Does anybody have any questions?
Nope.
Is there anyone here to speak to the location of the pole? Okay, hereby close the hearing. Can I get a motion to approve?
Make a motion that we approve the petition for joint or identical pole locations, number 270-96232, submitted on behalf of the National Grid.
Second.
And that's what the request says per the DPW?
Yep.
Okay, great. All in, any questions? All in favor?
Aye.
Thank you. I'm afraid to keep going. Is this quick? Is this, no?
It depends.
It depends, okay.
Mr. Lucia done?
Is Mr. Lucia done? Yes, he knows he's done because we have approved it.
Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Lucia.
Thanks a lot for coming in.
Thank you.
Let's go with fire department updates if they're not long. Well, you're next.
Okay.
I, I got a, that's a guest.
You only got 10 minutes.
I'll give you five.
Five's good.
All right, so I'm here for the fire department updates, pretty much this for the first six months of this fiscal year. Just kind of give you a wrap-up over the last few months. We did quite a bit over the summer, July and August. We had to complete all our annual testing. Ladder was certified, all our SCBA breathing apparatus, all our hose and pump tests were completed. We did find some minor problems that were addressed through repair. All the vehicles were inspected, repairs were completed by the DPW in September. My new ambulance was ordered in September as well, and the anticipated delivery should be late April, early May. October was Fire Prevention Month. We entered all the schools this year. We also brought the trailer with us, the smokehouse trailer, so the kids got the opportunity to do that. We also visited all the daycare centers in town as well. We had our open house combined with the Police Department and Dispatch in the middle of October, and we ended October with our annual Halloween block party at the fire station, which was a huge success. November, all the full-time staff completed Alice Training with the schools, so that is done. We are rolling that out now with the entire fire department, and we'll be conducting more training with the schools over the springtime. December started our renewal process with the Department of Public Health for our ambulance licensing renewal. They actually will be here next Tuesday all day, going through all our ambulances and paperwork documentation, so they will be here. That will be done. That also includes our food and drug license for our medications that we have to carry, so that is being done as well. Also in December, we conducted our third annual standard delivery run. That was conducted, we had over 200 stops, we delivered over 700 gifts to children within the community. It was a great time, the weather cooperated this year, so we were able to run on time. As Abby has asked, our annual report is in the process of being completed. Our annual calls are done on a calendar year, not a fiscal year, so our annual call volume for last year is just slightly under the previous year. Interesting is we broke it down, calls for service within the town of Rutland have increased, but our request for assistance from outside of Rutland has decreased by 32%. This has, mostly has to do with the town of Berry going to 24-hour staffing with their ambulance, so that's been a huge help for us. Budget for this year, we are currently under budget and payroll. Again, this primarily has to do with our additional daytime staffing person is able to eliminate some of the overtime costs, we'll be able to see some additional savings there as well. Line item expenses are on target. Ambulance revenue is on target, because we always look at that as a way to offset our budget next year. The only concern I have is each year we looked at our excess ambulance money as potential more free cash for next year, but because we moved that target of estimate up so high that we're going to be right at that target, so at least it won't be a negative number. Last year, we were awarded a contract from Department of Health and Human Services to replace the command car. That arrived in December. I don't know if anyone had a chance to see that. That was paid through by grants. Vehicle is now in service. The old car is in the process of being transferred to the Rutland Regional Rec for use as a mobile radio command unit for the district. The vehicle will be used as needed by rec personnel for response to other towns in emergencies, including remote radio tower maintenance. The reallocation of the property follows the town's guideline of surplus property and that the unit was being offered and/or transferred to other departments. Finance capital planning has approved this last year during the budget process, and the only thing that needs to be worked out now with the town accountant is a way to offset the cost of that vehicle into the rec, so all five towns absorb the cost of the vehicle. So that will be done through indirect charges next year. December 18th, we had a department annual potluck dinner. This year, well, each year we have an opportunity to get together and give out annual awards. This year, we had a community service award that was given for the dedication to bring holiday joy to the kids of Rutland during the annual Santa Run, and this one went out to dispatcher Jeffrey Mackler. Received that award. The responder of the year was given to a member of the call staff who responds to the most incidents during the calendar year. This went to firefighter Patrick Coffey. Our training award was given to her completing numerous training and certifications above and beyond what is required. This year, this individual took time to look at firefighter suicide and prevention and stress in the fire service. This award went out to firefighter Michelle Connor. The first due award is a first arriving apparatus to a major incidence. This award was for actions taken on the afternoon of January 12th, 2017. At 2:08 in the afternoon, Rutland Regional Communication Center received numerous reports of a fire at 176 Maple Ave, Building 7. On arrival, crews were met with heavy fire coming from the second-floor unit. Engine 2 crew led by Captain Justin Bassett, Lieutenant Dan Harris, Lieutenant Scott Kleiza, firefighter Pat Coffey, and firefighter Jesse Kleiman quickly advanced a 2.5-inch attack line into the building. The crew were met with heavy fire and extreme heat. While Lieutenant Harris was operating the pump of Engine 2, he was met by the occupant of the fire unit with second and third-degree burns. Lieutenant Harris was able to render aid until additional units arrived. So the firefighter year award was given to this individual who has shown extreme bravery and courage while working on the fire ground. His calmness under pressure resulted in the saving of several lives. Responding on the ladder of the fire on Maple Ave, orders were given to rescue trapped occupants on the second and third floor. This firefighter threw several ground ladders to people, rescuing people on the second floor, and then operated the aerial device to rescue people on the third floor. Once all occupants were rescued, this firefighter went on the roof with mutual aid companies and vented the roof to stop the spread of the fire. This award is nominated by the officers of the department, and this year, the award was given out to firefighter Tyler Grant. Our EMS provider of the year, this award was given to an EMS professional that has demonstrated outstanding patient care and has performed outstanding during life-critical situations. This provider works diligently to provide the latest in EMS training and education to all members of the department, and this year's award went out to firefighter paramedic Michael Gleason. Officer of the Year is the only award that is nominated by the rank-and-file members of the department. This award was given to the officer that demonstrates a strong team approach as well as to mentoring others. This award was nominated by members of the department. This award was given out to Lieutenant Dan Harris. And that's all I got for you.
It was longer than I thought.
Sorry.
That was an amazing list of awards. Thank you so much.
Good time. So things are going well, morale's high, we're fully staffed, meeting the challenges of every day.
Thank you.
That's all I got.
All right, thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Good work.
I'm going to leave this one up to Ms. Pierce. I could go back to the very top, or I could go to you, because Seth just, so much longer, so many more awards than I ever expected. What would you like?
I'll go.
All right, come on up.
Sorry.
Oh, you're fine.
Thank you, Madam Chairman. For those of you who don't know, I'm Janet Pierce. I'm Executive Director with the Central Mass Regional Planning Commission, and I'm here tonight on behalf of Peter Peliquin, who had planned to be here, and I said, oh, I'll come to Rutland, I love Rutland, haven't been here enough in the last couple of weeks, so. The reason for my visit, and if I can just ask everybody to sign in on this particular sheet, because it will become part of the Hazard Mitigation Plan, okay? So I'm here tonight to answer any questions you may have regarding the adoption of the Hazard Mitigation Plan. Your last plan was done in 2012. It runs for five years. The plan has been worked on since March, and it was presented to the board. It was approved, went through MEMA, and then to FEMA, and it's back to the town again for adoption. We will need a vote and a signed certificate of adoption for the updated Hazard Mitigation Plan. Was this included, or do you have this on letterhead?
Yes.
Yes.
The actual certificate of adoption was included.
Wonderful.
Yeah. Is there a, great, thank you.
So at this point, if I could just thank those folks who did participate on this, on the update, Chief Nyip, Gary Kelleher, DPW Superintendent who recently retired, former Town Administrator Margaret Nardowitz, Mike Moriarty with the Rec Director of Communications, former Police Chief Don Hakapowski, current Police Chief Monaco, and Building Commissioner William Cassinelli. Thank you. So do you have any questions regarding the plan? I know there was a summary that was provided as well, Peter had sent out as far as the public presentation for tonight.
I'm trying to remember, Janet, what I was reading as far as timelines on some of the things that clearly have, not necessarily an emergent factor, but a time-sensitive sort of let's-do-this-before-something-actually-happens factor.
Correct.
At what point should, and if the answer is yesterday, just say so, but at what point should we start looking very seriously at including this, possibly even in a capital budget? You know, is this something that the CIPC needs to start really taking a much longer look at?
Sooner rather than later, and there are also grant opportunities that exist out there. There's annual Hazard Mitigation Planning Grants, because for every dollar that you spend, you say four, should there be some type of natural disaster by mitigating the potential damage that was identified in the plan. So right now, there is a grant that's open through the disaster preparedness. There was an emergency that was declared last year through the winter storms, so they are taking proposals for any potential grant funding, I believe for the next month and a half or so.
Thank you.
So if you are interested, please reach out to us, we can certainly help you with that.
I have one department head nodding. I have one department head looking interested. Okay, all right.
So if you do need assistance, we can, we can help. But one thing to keep in mind, we've had a mild winter so far, but we've certainly had a lot of rain. If there's flooding, any type of damage associated with any type of storms, please take pictures. The pictures speak for themselves, and you never know when the disaster declaration may happen. It may be a year down the road, it may be two years down the road, and you have those pictures as references as to the damage.
Do you have any experience with the relative importance of a local municipality declaring a state of emergency? And obviously, we all think back to the ice storm, where we declared almost immediately the state, thinking, you know, 20 minutes from here that nothing was wrong. Maybe it took a little bit longer?
I don't have any experience with that.
Okay. We appreciate all of CMRBC's help. It was a huge process to get this, to the point where we were ready to actually get it re-energized for its five-year renewal, so.
It's not a pleasure working with you on so many different projects.
Does anyone in the room have any questions about Hazard Mitigation? No, you just sort of hope we don't have to deal with it? Okay. Could I get a motion, and I believe somewhere in a fancy folder somewhere, there are two original copies? I'm sorry?
It's in the blue folder with the other signatures.
I'll make a motion that the town adopt the Town of Rutland Natural Hazard Mitigation Plan.
Well, it's adopted and signed tonight.
Okay, adopted and signed.
Comments? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Excellent. More things to sign? There you go. Thank you so much, Dan.
Thanks for coming in.
Thank you so much.
Thank you. And the documents will be included with the plan. The draft will come off of it, it will go back to FEMA, and they will notify you once it's approved through FEMA again. And we don't anticipate any issues.
Okay.
Of course, with the shutdown, we're not sure when that may happen.
Oh. Is it appropriate to put the plan up on our town website with that note? Draft awaiting FEMA final approval?
We do have the draft as well, and I believe it's been forwarded to you, so if you wanted to put that up and then, or if you wanted to wait for when we send the, with the updated documents, we can send you a new copy of it if you wanted to put it up on your website.
That would be great. I mean, I think sooner rather than later, if you don't anticipate any changes.
No, we haven't had any.
Sorry.
Excellent. Great. Did you want everyone in the room to sign that document, or just up here?
How many?
We're getting to the bottom of it.
I have quite a few signatures from the room, so that's, that's good.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you so much.
Thank you.
Thank you.
All right, I am moving backward to the top of the agenda for anyone who has it in their hand. You might notice that the front of the table looks a little bit different tonight, and that's because our new Town Administrator has started with us officially as of today. Because he officially started today, he has already been technically officially sworn in. However, we think that the community should be a part of that, and so our town clerk was nice enough to take some time out so that we can do our honorary swearing-in ceremony with Mr. Nicholson's family who came tonight, and so, where do you think is the best spot, Anita?
Camera told us that near the podium, so if I'm here, and I want stuff.
Should we stand?
Yep. We can be here, and then we'll take a picture after.
Thank you.
Because this is nothing to do with us.
I, Michael J. Nicholson, solemnly swear and affirm that you will faithfully and impartially discharge and perform all the duties incumbent upon you as the duly-appointed Town Administrator for the Town of Rutland.
I do.
I'll let you read.
I, Michael J. Nicholson, solemnly swear and affirm that I will faithfully and impartially discharge and perform all of the duties incumbent upon me as the duly-appointed Town Administrator for the Town of Rutland, according to the best of my abilities and understandings, in accordance with the bylaws of the Town of Rutland, the laws of the Commonwealth of Massachusetts, and the rules and regulations of the Constitution, so help me God. Thank you.
Thank you very much.
Oh, now, hold on, Anita, I think we need some pictures.
I think so.
Do we have somebody taking official pictures? I have my camera too. Hold on.
I have an iPhone X, so, high quality.
Success. Success. You're going to beat me, Martha, every time.
Want to get in the front with your family, or whatever?
I'll take one with all of you first.
With the board? Should we have Mike standing in front of us, I feel like?
That might be weird, but. Or do you want to come in here besides Sheila?
I'll come back, yeah.
Yeah.
All the stuff.
All the stuff. I know.
Squeezery.
Perfect. Okay. Now what?
More pictures.
Let's all be looking the same way for the landmark.
Family. I'll borrow your iPhone X, Ted, if you trust me.
Yeah, that, trust me.
And where would you like your background to be? Right here? I think, come on up, family.
We'll get out of the way and let them.
Hi. Hello, hello. Coming out.
Nice to meet you. I'm Liam. Nice to meet you. Yes, we do.
Nice to meet you again, or see you again. Hi, nice to meet you.
Hi, nice to meet you, ma'am.
Me too.
Well, you should be in the middle. Well, I need the, where's the seal? Mike, remember the seal? Let's get the seal in there a little bit.
This can't be sent here.
Take out my camera, stand like, over there. Okay, all right. Oh, there we go. Seal still blocked, is that all right? No, you don't need it. All right. We know it's blocked. Well, this does take good pictures, Martha. Ready? Last one, please. Beautiful.
Thank you.
Thank you.
I know, I, I can tell.
There should always be cake?
Jeez.
Always throw.
I'm sorry.
Thank you all again.
Who's phone?
Mine. All right, I'm going to be passing down some things to sign while we do this, and we are headed onward. Next department update, Chief Monaco, thanks for being here.
Good evening.
Good evening.
Good evening. I looked, and it looks like I haven't done a department update since July, so.
What?
I haven't been invited from the board, so.
Don't start doing that.
You're going to be invited at every meeting now.
So I have lots, yeah, there's a lot of information on the sheet, and I would be happy to come.
Thanks, Janet.
All right, Nick Monaco, Police Chief. Well, start out with the robbery. We had an unarmed bank robbery at the GFA Bank on December 20th. Perpetrator walked into the bank, fully masked, gloved, eyeglasses on, completely unrecognizable, handed a note to the tellers, and demanded they fill the bag with money. They, they filled the bag with money, and he was in and out of the bank in under a minute before they were able to call the police and get the alarms going. So the investigation's still very much ongoing, detectives working on it pretty much non-stop, but no arrests yet, so as soon as we have something, I'll be happy to give it to you. And yes, want to move on to the handout I just gave you, some of the highlights of what we got going on right now. We just recently purchased the Hunter SmartShot booking photo system. It's an upgraded booking camera system that creates better quality photos, and it streamlines the booking process, and all the photos that are taken comply to federal standards. So this means that the officer doesn't have to do anything with aiming the camera, sizing it right, or doing the lighting right, just clicks the button, it's integrated into the reporting system, and his pictures come out the same every time. So that kind of software can be integrated into facial recognition systems and also integrated into the FBI's AFIS database, so our booking photos can move up the chain. Some grants over the past few months, we got a $4,260 Justice Assistant Grant for law enforcement equipment, and we use that for simunitions weapons, ammunition and safety equipment, and to send the firearms instructor to simunitions instructor school. So simunitions are, it's basically a less lethal or non-lethal ammunition and gun, so you see the blue gun on the handout is exactly the same size, weight, as our nine-millimeter Glock weapons. So the officers are able to engage in scenario-based, very realistic training with each other. We can train in town buildings, you know, places that they would respond to in a real emergency, though, so the training's very realistic, very lifelike. We also got a $5,523 grant from Maya, which is going to be used to purchase and install in-car video system on one of our cruisers. And I think since the last time we've been here, we got $14,000 from the Stanton Foundation after K-9 Cooney and Officer Finucci graduated from patrol school. So that money can be used to offset any wages we pay, K-9-related wages. And we also have a grant application out with the state for about $3,000 in pedestrian safety money. Personnel updates, all our full-time officers are on full-duty status. Detective Sanji just recently returned from six months' injury leave, and Officer Brent Carpenter just recently graduated from the full-time police academy. So everybody's back, everybody's working, except for two part-time officers who are still out injured, but I'm expecting one back in March and maybe one back in June. Let's see, Officer, unlike Seth, I only have one award to give out, and it goes off to Officer Jesse Catino. He was recently named the 2018 Officer of the Year. Jesse leads the department in arrests, citations, summonses, and had the best attendance record. He's a dedicated, loyal, trustworthy employee, steps up to the plate for anything and everything we ask him to. He's just an all-around great guy, he's done great things for the town. Officers Walker and D'Souza successfully completed the Health and Wellness Instructor Training, offered by the MPTC, which is the Municipal Police Training Committee, and they'll be teaching at physical fitness training at the Fitchburg State University Academy this summer. For the budget, wages are on track with about 53% remaining, expenses are a little tighter with 36% remaining, most likely due to major vehicle repairs made at the beginning of the fiscal year. So far, we've expended more than $10,000 on vehicle maintenance and repairs, which brings me to the state of the fleet. So the 2013 and 2014 Explorers each have 130,000 and 117,000 miles respectively, and well past any factory warranties. Last year, those are the two vehicles that had the motor, excuse me, motors replaced, so we put nice brand-new motors in these cars, but as expected, everything else is starting to fail, transmissions are failing, transfer cases, so we've been spending a lot of money trying to keep them on the road, keep them safe. Right now, everything's up and running, they've all passed mass safety inspections, but it's been kind of a struggle keeping them there. So you'll notice when I submit my FY '20 budget request, it's going to request new cruiser purchase being included into the operating budget, which will allow me to get the cruisers set on a replacement cycle, and we can effectively manage the lifespan of the cars. K-9 update, Officer Finucci and K-9 Cooney have been working the evening shift in a and K-9 Cooney have been working the evening shift and have been very active. From October through December, the team had 12 call-outs and 10 deployments, including five tracks, four building searches, and one apprehension. They did three community policing demonstrations throughout the quarter as well. The foundation continues to raise money through fundraising and we've received several donations to the K-9 gift account. So between the remaining grant money, foundation and gift account, we should be able to maintain this program for several years without incurring any cost to the town. A couple of weeks ago, we had a bit of a scare. Matt was on duty and K-9 Cooney got sick. We don't know what happened. He just started getting lethargic. He laid down. He just... You've all met him. He's crazy. He just laid down. He wasn't being himself. His lips started turning blue. His tongue was blue. So they called... They called the fire department thinking maybe they can come help the dog. And I'd actually like to recognize a few of the firefighters. Let's see. Captain Bassett, Lieutenant Harris, firefighter Meta Gleason, and firefighter Sullivan. As long as my own guys, Sergeant Troy Chauvin, and Officer Matty, and Animal Control Officer Jen Ford, their quick response, care and assistance they rendered to Cooney and Officer Finucci during the incident. Cooney was transported to the Rutland Vet and later to the Tufts Veterinary School... Excuse me, Tufts Veterinary School ER for treatment and testing and returned to duty the next day. So we don't know what happened. They ran him through all sorts of tests, tox screen. Everything came back negative. Completely healthy. He was back to work, acted himself again. So the way he kind of presented, like he had an overdose, but we have no evidence that he got into anything or that he had been anywhere where he would have come into contact with anything. But that's what it looked like and with the tox screen coming back negative, we can't say yes or no. That's what happened. So hopefully nothing like this happens again.
But you gave him Narcan, right?
They did.
It helped?
They did. Yeah, he started coming around after that. So whether it was coincidence or not, we don't know.
Are there any substances that don't show up on a sort of standard tox screen? And they did it at Tops, right?
They did. I don't know. I'm sure there are, but whatever they tested him for, it all came back negative.
But he's picking up trace amounts. Could be right off your boots.
Yeah. I mean, it could... Yeah, it could have came from anywhere that one of us had walked and walked back into the station.
Yep.
Matt takes him out and trains him all over town. He's running through the woods and so... Could have been anywhere, anything. He might have got something on his foot and licked it. So we don't know. Hopefully it never happens again.
On that same note, Chief, is there a K-9 version of Narcan available?
I believe they respond to the same doses that people do. So Matt does carry it.
Does.
And most of our guys have it also. Oh, that being said, firefighter Gleason is setting up a K-9 emergency aid class for everybody. So he's gonna... We can offer it to some of the other towns too. So firefighters and police come and learn some K-9 first aid basics in case anything ever happens to them.
When's that gonna be?
We don't know yet. But he's in the works of setting it up. So just some basic 2018 statistics. Calls for service are up. You see there's a little asterisk there because that also includes officer-initiated calls. We're up about 5,000. And I think that also has to do a lot with us being fully staffed. So we have more people on the road, more people on shift every day. So you see more proactive police work as well as responsive police work. Total arrest, 88, summons, 129, 610 incident reports, traffic crashes, 130, which is down from 151 last year, and 1,768 motor vehicle stops and 693 citations issued. So they have been busy. If you flip forward, there's a community policing update. There's probably about a dozen or so, just little blurbs about the different community events the officers have been involved in in the past six months. So rather than go through, you know, all of them, we'll just do a couple of highlights. Like Seth was saying, the police got to participate in the Santa Run too. They had a great time. We also participated in the Open House and the Haunting on Main Street. Everybody loved it. Let's see. We're also doing a lot of stuff still with the DeRoe School. Officer Carpenter's working on the next sporting event, which will be probably a volleyball game. Officer Grover, the school resource officer, is currently attending a physical intervention training with the DeRoe staff. So it's... That's basically a training. The staff at the DeRoe School has a different set of rules and procedures they follow when it comes to restraining kids. And we wanted one of our people to go to that as well. So when we go up there, we have a better understanding of how they're dealing with stuff and we can better help them out. And also Officer Cooney... Excuse me. Officer Finucci and K-9 Cooney are gonna do a training for the staff up there next week as well. They're gonna talk to the staff about how to preserve a... If we need to track a kid with a dog, how to preserve the scene so it doesn't get all messed up before the tracking dog gets there. So they do a lot of community policing stuff.
Thank you for encouraging all the community policing. I think it's had a really positive impact on the town as a whole. So I know, I think we all appreciate that.
Thank you.
Did you have an extra one of these, Chief?
Yes.
Can we give that to Mrs. Booth from the landmark? Are you aware of all the different...
That's...
Mrs. Roy, I'm sorry. Yeah. There's a lot of different events on here. I'd love to share that with them. Sorry, Mrs. Roy. Above and beyond, Chief.
Thank you.
I don't know what to say.
So you brought up the budget?
Yes.
One cruiser with the idea that we will have a cruiser a year replaced and fully paid for?
Yes.
Okay. And then we'll have one lease payment left? Is that correct?
There is one lease payment left.
One, not a full car's worth, but one of a three-year lease?
One-third of one car.
One-third. Okay.
Which I'm gonna ask if we could pay for that at the special town meeting before the annual.
Right. So we're hoping to have some free cash in the spring. Okay.
Correct. That's my plan. We've kind of found that purchasing one car outright is gonna be cheaper than doing a lease because with the lease, you end up with a finance charge as well.
Okay.
And this will bring us into a regular rotation, you think?
Yes.
So kind of get us off that hump?
Yeah, so one new one per year and then we'll get rid of one per year, whether we repurpose it to another town department or trade it in.
Does... I don't think we have anybody left in the room who has any sense of when we were last able to do this, because this is actually a return to a process that we used to have and had to cut many years ago.
Oh, okay. It was well before my time.
It was before our time.
Because each time we get a car, it's either through a lease or a debt exclusion or an override.
Right. It's been years. Yeah, the goal has been this for a long time. So I'm hoping we could see it through.
How many vehicles are on the fleet now?
Including mine, seven. And I was planning on, when we got the last new car, I was planning on sending in one of the old Explorers, getting rid of that. But until I got the replacement schedule in place, I wasn't comfortable getting something yet.
Do you find... Sorry. Do you find seven's a good number?
Seven is good. We could survive on six, but seven would be better.
So the new car would be enough to allow you to retire the oldest or least functioning?
Yes.
Okay.
Yes, which would probably be the 2013 Explorer.
The one with 130?
Yes.
Is the 2013 Explorer worth keeping in town or is it meant for the graveyard?
It could be worth keeping in town, but things may continue to fail on it.
Okay.
If you're running 24/7 cruiser type, where it's different than...
Well, that's true.
Right. Yes. I mean, if it went to an administrative position where, you know, they're not going off into the state park and snowstorms and it could be salvageable.
Okay. All right.
Yeah, the oldest car on the fleet remains my Crown Victoria, but...
But that's not the one you'll...
No, it's still running very nicely. It's only got 69,000 on it. So I figured it's better to replace a patrol vehicle and replace that at this point.
I personally like that you're driving the Classic. I don't know that you necessarily feel that way, but I think we had this discussion. And is it fair to say that you may have one of the last Crown Vics in service?
I do, yeah.
State.
Yes.
Yeah.
Yes. I told Sheila not long ago that I went to a chief's training and the entire parking lot was brand-new Explorers and Tahos and Toruses and there's my one Crown Victoria in there. But I thought it was impressive that we still have it.
I guess you should, you know, own it. Maybe we should. Yeah.
How many unmarks do you have?
Two. That includes mine.
I like the use of an unmark because when you're making out-of-town runs or like going to court, you're not displaying that the town has one less officer out there when you see, you know, the Rutland colors out and...
Right. Yeah, all patrol vehicles we use for marked, the unmarked... The other unmarked is assigned to the detective and one of the sergeants.
Anybody have any questions? Thanks.
Would you... Do you want to move on to the crime comparison report now or...?
Sure.
Okay. All right. So you'll see there's a crime comparison report comparing crime stats from '27 compared to... 2017 compared to 2018. These categories are all set up by the feds. These are FBI crime categories. So they take Massachusetts laws, Massachusetts violations, and code them into this... These categories here. So basically, we have crimes against the person, which it looks like we're down 36%. Next page, crimes against property. In total, we're down 43%. Crimes against society, we're down 58%. I know these numbers seem extraordinarily different. And Group B crimes, which include driving under the influence, disorderly conduct, trespassing, things like that, we're down 27%. So I got three theories on why they're down so much. Number one is the drug situation has improved statewide. The heroin epidemic is improving. And in Rutland, it's improving as well. We... If you look at drug crimes, where is it? It's the fourth page where it says crimes against society. Drug crimes are down 69% in Rutland. So which translates to a big drop in property crimes. So burglary, breaking and entering. Last year, we had 19 incidents. 2018, we only had four. So a lot of B and E crimes are tied to drug offenses. So I think with the drop in drug crimes, you're seeing the drop in property crimes. Second is I think the improved situation at the DeRoe School is improving our crime stats quite a bit. The staff up there is being better trained, they're better managed, the relationship with the police department is much better. In 2016, we had 25 arrests of DeRoe School clients. Last year, we only had three. So it's... Things are getting much better up there. I think between the clientele coming in is different. They've moved more towards a autism treatment program instead of behavioral disorder treatment program, staff's being better trained, and the police-staff relationship, as well as the police-client relationship, has vastly improved. So and I think the police-client relationship is improving because we're up there more interacting with the students on positive things, you know, basketball games. They did the fundraiser for Cooney. He goes up, does a little demonstration. So they see us as regular people instead of enforcers. Starting to change up there. And then thirdly, the police department's been well-staffed. Everybody's been out there being proactive, being very visible. So I think that's had an impact on as well. And I think if, yeah, if you move on to the traffic stats, I think that's a big factor in the traffic stats. You can see, you have the traffic stat, the graph's in there. Yeah, you can see that crashes this year are down at 130 compared to 151 last year, 153 the year before, and 146. So it's the lowest it's been in four years. If you look at the other graph, the traffic fines are way up. So police wrote $38,000 in traffic fines compared to 15,000 last year. So you can kind of see on the bottom graph, every time it spikes in traffic fines, you kind of see a dip in crashes.
How much of that do we see back, you know?
It really depends because it trickles in well after the fines are written. Becky could probably... Nope, she left.
It goes into chapter 90, right?
Yes. Yeah. She could probably give you a better number on how much we actually see. So if you take a speeding ticket, which is, let's say it's a $205 speeding ticket, $5 of that goes to a state fund for law enforcement training, $50 goes to a head injury surcharge, and then the remaining 150 is split between the town and the state. So if that person pays the full fine, we get 75 bucks out of the 205. So that's a speeding ticket. Any other violation though, like an inspection sticker or stop sign violation, that full ticket amount goes to the town.
Inspection stickers violations go right to the town?
Yes. Eventually, after they get cycled through the registry and state.
Nice.
So we're gonna try and keep the graph moving downward.
Do you think the number of fines issued is just more police visibility, that you've had a full staff that is out and about more?
Yeah, they've been more proactive, just due to being fully staffed and they can spend more time in traffic enforcement.
Is there a way to attach these numbers to population?
Yes.
There is?
Yes. Yeah, it would be interesting to see how the amount of crashes has gone up and down with population changes.
I mean, the amount of crashes since 2010, that's a sharp and...
Yes, it is.
Worrying increase, really.
Right.
You know, a number you finally got back down and I'm hoping, to your point, it'll stay that way. But to think of what the possibilities are behind that increase over what's now eight years.
Right. So yeah, our population is obviously growing and you got to consider the populations west of us are growing as well. So even as more people live in Rutland, there's plenty of other people building in Oakham and Hubbardston and Barry and commuting through town on their way to work in the cities.
I guess the other question about the crashes is how... Is there a way to separate them by minor fender-bender type versus major accident?
Yeah, there's a way. I could extrapolate the data.
Well, thank you.
So...
Oh, sorry. This might be a little bit more, but problem intersections. I mean, we know 68 in Massachusetts is huge, or used to be. I think it's been better now that this... There's been more signage and bigger stop signs and everything, but there's still a lot down there.
Right.
I assume probably the center of town is a lot of, at least, fender benders.
Right. Yeah, we see a lot at Main and Maple, Main and Pomigasid, Main and Central Tree area.
Four corners. That's a killer.
Yep.
Yeah.
Right. So yeah, I can get all that data on a map too, distribute to the officers and can focus on those spots. They do a lot of enforcement in those spots anyways, but sometimes it's better to see it on paper to see why you're going to those places.
Anything else we can do for you?
No. I thank you for the continued support and look forward to meeting you again soon.
So we're on track for a special town meeting before the annual to foresee this proposed cruiser.
Well, yeah. I mean, I have to be honest, in retrospect, we probably should have just done it in the fall, but the fall meeting had become pretty big. And so there were things that we felt like, well, we can hold off. So we carried over some free cash that hopefully we won't need. Joe will actually be the person to know more by the time spring comes. It's really gonna be based on our snow and ice overages. And hopefully, we'll have money left over in the spring to just... And generally, at that point, we're plugging holes. So to the point where you said you're a little bit over, right, 36% left on your supplies as a line item?
Right.
You know, that would be a hole to plug. Whereas if we have a little bit more than that, we can put it towards that lease payment and just sort of clean that, close that book.
Right.
That would be great.
Yeah. I don't like these lease ideas.
Well, for a long time, it was our only option. Even that was a battle. Yeah.
Who do we thank for the... All the grants that you've been getting? The $4,000 for justice, $5,000 for Maya, $1,400 from Stanton? Who's the mastermind behind that?
I put in for all those.
That you?
Yeah.
That's excellent.
Thank you. Thank you.
That's excellent.
Yeah, and we should get another $4,000 from the Stanton Foundation when Matt and Cooney graduate drug school, which I forgot to bring up. They should be going to narcotic school in early summer. Just waiting for an academy date.
And apparently, there's a dog park grant from Stanton?
There is, yes.
But we need probably a community person to sort of be the driving force?
Yeah, a town official does have to put in for the grant.
A town official has to apply for the grant?
Yes.
Okay.
Yeah.
Yes.
I E U. That means you, right?
I am a town official. I would be very happy to put the information together and maybe... Yeah, start working on it.
Does Gardner have a Stanton Grant Dog Park?
Just opened. Well, it will be opening in May.
How big is it?
Pretty big.
How much did the town have to pay? City?
25%?
25%.
Dog park, I like it. Let's talk more about that.
No pressure. You know.
Officer Finucci, since you mentioned him a couple of times, I mean, he's been very visible. The community, I love the K-9. You see the K-9 car, everybody everywhere. And people are always asking me about the dog. How's the dog doing? How's the dog doing? You know? He's really done good. And I noticed in the last part of your public community service handout here, you didn't mention it, but I'm just gonna say it because I'm associated with the Sportsman's Club. Officer Finucci came out and partnered with the Rutland Sportsman's Club and we did a three-day basic firearms handling... Rutland Sportsman's Club, and we did a three-day basic firearms handling safety class that involved actual shooting.
Right.
It was like a spousal clinic for spouses and family members. We started with the club who have a firearm, but they want to be familiar with how to use it. So Officer Finuccio came out all three days, and I did the safety portion, talked about the legal concerns. We had a very, very nice conversation, nice Q and A. The room was full. We had twenty-five-plus people in there. We divided it into two different shooting groups for the next two nights, and he was hands-on with that. So please, recognize him for that. And I didn't realize that, you know, there was, much of that was on his own time.
Yeah.
But it was, it was just very nice to see the, the K-9 squad up there at the Sportsman's Club and closing the relationship with, you know, the PD and the club and the community that way. So, really liked it.
Thank you. Yeah, he very much enjoyed it. So I expect to want to do it again.
But that goes to show the morale and the, the esprit de corps of the, of the department because I was on the department myself. And unless you share that, you're not, you're not bought in to the community to come out on your day off, grab your cruise and go down and teach a, a three-night class. You just don't do that unless you're, you're bought in as a, as a team player. And all indications are you have a hundred percent team there. And that's, it's above and beyond.
Thank you. And I, yeah, I should note that all the community stuff in the last couple pages, a lot of it, I don't order them to go to. It's, they, they want to do it. They really enjoy working in this community. They enjoy working with the police department. They enjoy getting out there with the people. So that's all, they're bought into it. It's not, you do this, do that.
And Officer Grover, too, with the schools. Excellent. We saw her out there. She, I mean, I can name at least two other events that aren't included on your, on your handout here that, that my was, was there specifically at the, the field day for the, for the school kids, you know, where they had the ladder up there. She was out there doing that. And then when they had the winter carnival, she was out there, you know, doing the potato sack ways and stuff. And, I mean, you guys own community policing, but that's all, I mean.
Thanks.
So kudos to both those officers.
I will pass it along.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Keep up the good work.
Thank you, Chief.
Thank you.
So we said the table looked different. It's time for the, time for the town administrator report. But I just want to note that we are not completely starting afresh. We are nothing if not one extreme or the other. So we didn't have a town administrator for, for what, eight years after we had approved one. Now we have two. So we still have Bob in the back of the room with us.
Bob, you can leave now.
For a couple of weeks, in case people thought he had abandoned us. He's, he's doing a little overlap for two weeks. We have him left. But it is time for the town administrator report.
Today went great for our first day. Bob took me around to a couple of different places in the town. We stopped by the Heights property to check that out, to get a feel with that, as well as the Central Tree School area, to take a look at the fields and things there. And we also stopped by Central Office for Wachusett and had a sit-down meeting with the superintendent to talk about things there. They're meeting tonight with their facilities committee to discuss the soccer fields. And they said, we should have a better idea after what that committee says tomorrow. And then the school committee should be voting on that next Tuesday. So they did say that. Bob updated me on a couple of projects that both he and Margaret had been working on. The bylaw committee, the building committee to take a look at the different facilities that the town owns, to see what needs updating, what needs improvements, and things of that nature, and discussions on whether those should be committees that are more of a working group of department heads versus a citizen committee versus a mix of the two, or seeing the differences there. So those were conversations that we had there. I am meeting with the chair of the finance committee on Wednesday, just to sit down and talk about what, how they expect my role to work with them, and to get an, an expectation as to how things should go forth there and just open up that conversation. And the capital committee invited me to their meeting on Thursday night, too. So I'll be attending that as well. We got a call at the office from Sean Powers from DLS. They're the office that oversees the compact grants, okaying the extension for the IT grant for the purchase of the viewpoint software. That way, Dave, the town planner, has time to make sure that that implementation goes smooth and efficient and everything gets done there. So that was a good call that we got today. And then cleanup day's tomorrow. I found that out. That was neat. So in an effort to start cleaning up the auditorium and community hall, we're gonna get some of the junk that's out of there taken down to the recycling center and taken care of. And just want to say thank you to Bob for being such a big help today, showing me the ropes. And I appreciate all the help. All the department heads and the staff have been great, great to meet them all. Chief told me that he'd take me around town, show me all the nooks and crannies and everything like that. So that was great. Good to get a feel of town that way. And we're going.
Make sure he makes you sign that release for riding in the car. All right. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Thanks, Mike. Onward. Let's, I, was Anita here for the senior tax write-off and left permanently, or anyone? Senior tax write-off program? Or can we just go through it, Abby?
Yes, I don't think she was here for that.
Okay, okay. So in your folder, you have the draft of some changes to the way our senior citizen property tax work-off program is working. We've had this going now for a couple of years, and there, the offices are finding that the way we set up the program isn't exactly the way things ended up falling when it came to the, our community, which I think a lot of communities find. Abby, I think the...
I think section two...
I, I mean, I think it's the highlighted things. This is not a lot. So if you look on program procedures, we're changing that program information to be published, publicized in July, meaning we'll be able to take advantage of the beginning of the fiscal year. And obviously, we'll have had a budget approved from May. If you look up at the top, actually, eligibility, program limited to ten participants.
So the, the changes for also the minimum wage?
Yep.
Before, it left a dollar amount in the minimum wage. We're updating the minimum wage, we're updating the changes in minimum wage. So we updated the state minimum wage and removed the actual dollar amount. So we're not continuing updating it.
Great.
I also removed deadline years because there was a lot of referencing, October first. I just turned the dollars from the policy so that, again, we're not continuing to update. It's just referencing the same identity. And then the workflow is under program procedures. Section two, there's, the, the workflow of the application process didn't really match what the offices were doing. And my understanding is that it didn't match that from the beginning. There was a lot of reference to who was doing interviews and so forth. So I updated it to reflect what the actual workflow to what department in the selectmen's office is.
What are the changes over here?
Yeah, I mean, I see.
It's section two of program procedures.
Section two.
But it's not highlighted. Right. So it's hard for it. Okay.
Okay. So everything in section two, the A to E, are new.
Changed. It reflects the actual workflow. It used to say that the selectmen's office and town administrator's office conducted the interviews and did the hiring process for the departments and notified applicants of their hiring. So it, it just changed to actually reflect what we've been doing.
So I guess to request, if this is not time-sensitive, we'll give the board, or maybe a little more time to take a look at it. If there's a way to send them a version of this with your changes maybe in red so they can see what you did. And then I think the only other question, because we haven't looked at this in a while, is whether or not the assessors want to have a discussion relative to their overlay and how many people we can accommodate in the program.
Yeah, this year, it's gotten very busy. We have, in the past couple of years, we've probably had six at maximum participants, five or six out of the ten slots. This year, we are at nine and already working. And I've probably gotten at least a dozen calls in the past eight weeks, starting in November after the deadline, that they wanted more information. They were interested. So I, I don't know if that, where that's being driven from, but probably next year, we will have even more.
So it's, we can look at it now because, yeah, so Mike, maybe reach out to the assessors and see where they are with their overlay.
Yeah.
See if they have any strong feeling about our numbers.
I was gonna say, is the number set by the assessors, or?
It was set based on our available funds.
Okay.
And typically, this is funded through overlay. Or at least it has been for us. Yeah.
I mean, if the only changes are the, the two, I'm fine with it. Who drafted this?
This is already a policy that has been, it's been edited a couple of times and dates are referenced. At the bottom, it's the same policy that's already been in the works. It's just changing the workflow under section two and removing eleven dollars an hour out of it. So it just reflects state minimum wage.
Plus, I'm...
Can take the years off, right? So it's like the month, day of current year, whatever.
So the policy's about the same every year. Now, we're not having to amend it.
Is that a joke?
Yeah. No, let's approve this thing and let's get it moved out.
Oh, sorry.
Where you gonna work?
Get rid of it.
Let's have this for, for selectmen over sixty. We can start deducting our hours.
All right. Everybody seems fine with it. Thank you, Abby, for the updates and edits. I'm sure all the department heads will thank you as well. Could I have the motion?
I'm gonna approve the senior tax work-off program as presented.
Second. So that's edits to the program information and procedures. Okay. All in favor?
Aye.
Thank you. All right.
Thanks, Abby, for doing those updates.
Yep. Thank you for that.
And coordinating with everyone.
Joe Buckley. Come on down. Uh, no, you actually, usually could go there. But if you don't want to, technically, you could probably sit in front.
Depends on how long you talk. The last guy was a talker.
We want to have you.
We have you on here for the UBWP district appointment.
Yes.
Would you like me to elaborate as to why we have to do that?
Yes. Just explain to everybody what we're doing here.
The town of Rutland's wastewater is carried through DCR lines that go through Holden down into the city of Worcester, and then through the city of Worcester to the Upper Blackstone Pollution Abatement District. The Upper Blackstone Pollution Abatement District sets rates for treating wastewater, which are eventually passed on to ratepayers in Rutland. So we have a, we are a member of, we're a member community, so we should have representation on that board and be able to be involved in the decisions and understand what's going on.
And you want to be on it?
Yes.
I'll make a, I'll make a motion that we appoint you to be on that committee. Second.
The thing that's left is someone has to notify the director of the Upper Blackstone writing.
You got a guy sitting right here that'll do that.
Do you know if there are any dates attached to this, or are we just naming you as our representative from Rutland?
You could put a date on it.
Effective immediately?
Yeah, effective immediately is fine.
And just basically forever. Okay.
Okay.
All right. I have a motion and a second. Any comments? All in favor?
Aye.
And you walked all the way up, and you sat here for a whole hour just to do that. Is there anything you need to talk to us about now that you're here? You're not on here for department updates, so I will not pull you to anything.
Uh, no. No, I don't have any real updates. I'm still getting, still learning what's going on with the department. I can't give you any updates at this time. It's just, we've been busy with small snowstorms, things like that.
Okay.
How's it going on from your perspective? Like...
In what respect?
No, just in general. Like, you feel like you're settling in well?
Oh, yeah. Yeah. Yep.
Everyone's been helpful?
Everybody's been really helpful.
Okay.
Thank you.
Anything we can do for you?
Um, I'm sure there's more you can do for me, but today's not the day to discuss it.
I really have to get my hands around everything yet. Okay.
All right.
So before you leave?
Sure.
Oh, we got a sign request here in front of us. It says they want some, so I don't even know what they're looking for.
It's actually a two-sign request.
Yeah, but this one here says there's, it may be required, this may require a traffic study by Mass DOT because of the chapter ninety rule. What can you, you know anything about those?
So you might not have seen this, Joe. This was signed before you.
Come get it.
You can take a look at it. We're gonna talk about that next. So if you have a comment, you can go back to your safe seat, but maybe just stay for a minute and let us know if you have a comment.
It's all right.
All right. Okay. Thank you. Thanks, Joe, for being on the Upper Blackstone for us. Fight the fight. Tell them we want our rates lowered. Yeah. He's like, no.
They never go down.
I know. I know.
That's a framer.
All right. I'm moving on to the straight sign requests. We are going to actually start with Edson Avenue. I, I just, I want to note that the pages in front of you are the same ones you always get. These for the, it's one of the few that we've had come in front of us. Actually, both of them that are here tonight have not been recommended by DPW, by police, or by fire. If anyone has any comments, I suggest you make them now. We're gonna start with Edson. Otherwise, based on department head recommendations, we're gonna take action. So.
Sean Moore is here.
Yeah, we have the petitioner here, so let's hear from him.
That's true. Mr. Moore, do you have a statement to make about your request? Is that why you're here, by the way?
I'm sorry. No, I just, when I get a free time at home, I can...
You leave, you leave the house.
My community, yes.
Okay.
But, yeah, Sean Moore through Edson Avenue. Edson is a, is small street, but unfortunately, I think in all Massachusetts, side streets are thirty miles an hour is the speed limit. I personally think it should, people should travel like fifteen miles an hour on that street because it, Edson and Laurelwood, all the streets do have a lot of families and little kids. But on my particular piece of property, I have this huge Arbor V-Day that kind of obstructs my driveway. And when people are coming from Laurelwood or down through Sunny Side, a lot of people use it as a cut-through to go from Maple Ave down Sunny Side and then down onto Edson to Main Street. They travel kind of fast. And for me, when I'm pulling out, I do kind of have a, a clear spot. But once I hit that Arbor V-Day, I, I, I can almost guarantee cars can't see me coming out. And just, I, I requested for a sign, a hidden drive sign, because I think my driveway's pretty hidden. And if I could just notify people of that, it might, you know, save an accident.
Who owns the, the Arbor V-Day?
I own the Arbor V-Day. And it's, it's beautiful. It's like almost thirty feet tall. It's...
Can we get it down to like two feet?
I would hate to do that. It's, but you know, it's, it's just a request. It can be denied, and I'm okay with that. So.
Is it on your own property?
The Arbor V-Day?
Yeah.
Yes, Arbor V-Day is on my property. But I think, you know, there is a, when a person has a piece of property next to a road, part of it is actually owned by the town. Is that correct? So, but I hate to see that, that go.
So if you complain real loudly, the town will come cut the tree down?
No, I don't want, I don't want to. I, I love my Arbor V-Day. I love it. So, but it, it does obstruct my driveway coming on the outside. Coming off of Main Street, it's a lot, there's, you know, nothing really blocking it. Although, a lot of people, when they do come off of Main Street, they kind of drive up the left side of the road, like during England or somewhere. So, you know, it's, I keep an eye out for that. But there's been, I've had a couple of close calls. You know, I always try to, you know, I, I stop before I pull my driveway and make, make sure it's safe for me, but to give a little bit of help. Especially for kids, too, because my kids play in the yard. If someone can see there's a hidden driveway, they come out, car going thirty miles an hour, kill the kid. But, that's it.
I mean, where would the sign be?
Uh, wherever the town decided. The best place for it.
Hidden driveway. I don't, I don't think it would make a difference, quite honestly.
But, yeah, it, uh, someone, one of my neighbors mentioned I should go up and ask for a sign, so.
Sean, it was worth the ask. Unfortunately, you're kind of rock and hard place here. Generally speaking, hidden driveway signs get put up because there's something about the construction of the road that hides the driveway. In your case, you've chosen to leave a shrub that hides your driveway.
Yes.
And it's your shrub. So I get it. I, believe me, I get it. You don't want to take it down, but it's, you've sort of...
Well, it's, it's tallying up to the town whether you want to put a sign there or not. So it's fine by me.
All right.
So could I ask you, how many people on your street?
How many people are, live on my street?
Yeah.
I, that I could not tell you. I mean, I, I mean, I'm friends with most of them.
So if you want the traffic to go slow, why don't you get a petition up and present it to the police department and see if they can't change the...
The speed limit on it?
Speed limit on it. Speed limit on it.
That could be, I don't know. It's mainly 30 miles an hour. And I think that's, on any side street, I think 30 miles an hour is too fast, but.
I don't know. If it was me, I'd get a petition.
I could present it, see what way. There are a lot of kids that live on my street, so I got three of them.
I, I mean, I got to be honest, and, and you've probably been in meetings where you've heard me say this. It's the same discussion we have come up at every subdivision. There's a lot of kids in the street.
Yeah.
And the fact of the matter is, the only people, I, I don't drive on Edson. I have no reason to drive on Edson. The only people who drive Edson are people who live in your neighborhood.
Yeah.
The only people in the subdivisions, generally speaking, are the people.
They do get the cut, I do get a lot of cut through from Sunnyside on to Maple Ave.
From Sunnyside, yeah. But it's still sort of that neighborhood. You're not getting cut throughs from Palmigusset, so.
No, no.
Yeah, it's such a tough call. It's the neighborhood and, I, I mean, I think Nick's stats tonight show better than ever that they're working on it, but.
Yeah, and it is. So it's traffic is going down and it's, okay, that's, that's my say.
No worries.
Okay, do I have?
What you're saying, Sean, is it okay for the police to set up there, do a little, little traffic enforcement?
Oh, I wouldn't mind that at all.
Slow down there.
I, I drive slow. I mean, I'm hardcore, drive slower. I like to cruise and go through and feel like an old lady. Yeah, thank you.
On that note, can I get a motion for Edson?
I make a motion that we, we concur with the recommendation of the DPW, the police, and the fire, that the petition's not recommended for, based on the three denials.
Second.
Okay, so motion for disapproval, all in favor?
Aye.
With respect.
Aye, all right. You can sign that one. Next one, the petition was put in regarding trucking on Pleasantale to be limited to only small trucks between 122 and Main Street. So that's the full length of Pleasantale. And just so everybody here knows, the comments from DPW, which Skip had just referenced, was that it would require a traffic study by Mass DOT because that's a Chapter 90 road. And so that was not recommended just purely, really, as something that we couldn't do right now without significant multiple steps.
Mr. Buckley, did, you didn't check off approval not recommended?
That was, yeah, that was, it was Chris.
That's why. Oh, okay, okay, got you.
Do you have to make a decision on this this evening?
No, not tonight.
Can you table this? Can you table it and we'll get back to you?
Yeah.
All right, that'd be best.
Okay.
All right.
Very nice. Motion to table the street sign request of one relating to 122 to Main Street.
All in favor?
Aye.
Thank you, Joe.
Thank you. Okay, onward. The Rutland Ag Land Planning and Preservation Plan, this is the second time you're seeing this. I don't, Abby, do we get any feedback on it? We did get commentary back, just to keep this process going, from the Agricultural Commission. I believe they were going to meet, it might be tonight. What?
Tomorrow night.
Tomorrow night, okay.
Later in the week.
They were going to review this and come back to us. They did attend, or they had somebody attend that Westminster event at the beginning of the year. So we're still looking at input on this. Remember, this is a draft. I think, again, the first step will be something that we'll work on in time for a town meeting, which would be the Agricultural Preservation Fund creation, and see if we have money to fund it.
Who drafted?
I did.
Nice.
Thanks. I won't do it anymore. Now I have Mike.
Uh, what was the, did you use a model?
Uh, no, I did not use a model. I used, I used information from other communities, but there was no model for this draft plan.
What would you like from us on this?
I don't need anything right now. This was actually on, I want to say, because we thought maybe we'd get some information back from AgCon, but we haven't yet. So just more of an update and ongoing request for input. If you have strong feelings about it, this will be a first for us.
I support it.
Okay, that was easy. Onto photo contest. I feel like I need to turn to Mike and Abby for this one.
Abby mostly.
Abby. No?
I just drafted one which that's in your binders, and it was emailed to you last week, just asking for the public to submit photos, and one of them would be utilized for the cover of the annual town report this year.
Yes, so the annual town report that is printed and available at town meeting, we've always really just had a town employee taking pictures, and it's been fine. But Abby and I started talking a couple of years ago, I think, about seeing if we could do a contest. And luckily, we have Mike, who has just done it.
Yeah, we, in my previous position, we just did this last year, and we were surprised one at the amount of photos that we had submitted, but two, the quality of the photos that were submitted, there were sometimes I was like, okay, where in Gardner was this taken? Because I don't know where this is. And it was just the angle and the way that it was taken. So it's interesting to see what you get as a result of it, and the talent that really exists and the talent that people don't get to see. So, I mean, we have one for the cover of the annual report. We can try to use some of the town's social media, on the website and things like that. So finding new ways to market what we have here in the town through these contests could be something.
Any way that you can display these on the social media or the town website?
Yeah, absolutely.
That'd be kind of nice.
You, you guys put everything on here that we had talked about. I guess my only question was eight by 10 seemed huge.
I read, I got that from the printer. I read that to him, asking him if there's special requirements. And one of the, I didn't list it because I know not all people do this anymore. He said eight by 10 is the best size for him to work with as far as changing, for clarity. He also said most people take pictures on their phone. They do prefer pictures taken on a real digital camera, but. Not everyone would, that submit would necessarily do that. But I can add that recommendation if you think it's important.
Plus, one submitted on a phone is fine for an online format, too. So I feel like that's just more for the printing purposes of the annual report.
With an eight by 10, he can.
He can play with it a little more.
Size it more, and it's easier to play with as far as what we want on the cover.
But we're asking for them in a JPEG digital format. Do you want to limit people to that? If we have somebody who does old school prints, do you want to be able to allow them to just hand you a print?
Or scan it and turn it into a JPEG at that point?
You just don't know the clarity of.
Right.
Right, depends on the scanner.
I think the printer could handle that, though.
I'd have to reach out to the printer. It depends. I'm sure they have software that is much better than our scanner and.
Yeah, I don't.
That would probably do okay.
Yeah, they're a real printing company. I'm sure that, I mean, it's not like the digital format was available, really has been available very long. Before that, of course, that's what you did. You sent in a, a mock-up. Yeah, you sent in a mock-up, and it was attached, and it went through the process and, yeah, taped on to the page. So that would be my one request. And then as far as the optimum size, I think we do need to do something with pixels. I just looked it up. It looks like it's 2,400 by 3,000 minimum. Somebody, somebody being told eight by 10 could enlarge a photo to the point where the pixels, it would just be a blur.
I think that's why he said.
Yeah.
He suggested an eight by 10, because if you have a picture that's taken at a small and then you try to make it bigger, it's just going to blur at that point in time.
All right.
Where it's going to stay clear if you have a bigger picture that you make smaller.
Right. And I get what he means. I'm just wondering if people, nobody sits there and says, my phone is set to take an eight by 10. They don't.
Yeah, I mean, I think it'd be confusing putting pixels to myself, just because.
Really? Okay.
I mean.
People will just take a picture.
Yeah.
True enough.
And then we can go, we can make that one of the criteria that we use when we're picking two.
I was gonna say, that's a judging criteria.
I, personally, I have no idea what the pixels are in my phone when I take a picture.
Okay.
I just take the picture.
Do you want me to remove the size request?
No, I think my only request will be, are the requirement to submit in JPEG digital. How about preferred in JPEG digital, however, our copy photos will be accepted.
Looks great.
Then we'll put it on Facebook and the town website.
Everywhere, everywhere.
Yeah, pretty good.
Looks great. Yeah, I like it.
I think, do we need a motion to go forward? Is it that official?
I don't think so.
No, you don't think so? Everybody's just happy with it? Okay, that's fine.
Do you want a motion to go forward?
I do want a motion.
Make a motion that we accept the wording for the annual town report cover photo contest for 2019 with the addition of, that we talked about.
Yep.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
You don't like it, Skip?
I know.
Come on, Skip, you can submit a photo.
No. Is there?
Good. Flying eagle.
Oh, jeez. Is there anyone?
Soaring eagle, sorry.
Is there anyone here for public comment? Well, no, no, stay there. No, okay, stay there. You've got a microphone right above you. We're fine.
I passed this out once before. I just gave a copy to the Holland Landmark. Did anybody go to the hearing last week about the Suesbury and Doyle Street?
No, you asked me this morning. I kept up with it, with the online comments, and I can see where they're headed.
And as you can tell by this here, it's almost 20 years, that I put the ads in the paper to get going on it. And had they started, we would be driving on it probably by now, had they put it in. And like I, if you saw the planning board meeting that we had here, and it was taped, and I tapped the microphone, and I told Paul, get ready, and I told him, this is what I would say. But I did not know that I had a meeting.
So.
I was going to go to the meeting, but I.
Hold, I'm sorry. I just, I want you to back up so everybody can hear you.
That's all right. No, I'm not going to, I'm not going to scream what I did out there, but.
Oh, no, oh, no. Just so they can hear you now as their meeting's going on. And also, you haven't been here in a while. We need your name and address.
Yeah, Dick Williams, Overlook.
Okay, thank you.
And anyways, I've been trying to push this bypass for 20 something years, and keep on looking the other way. We, the planning board went to Holden, and this is way back when Mike Sullivan was chair at the time, and it was his brother that was chair in the Holden one, and they thought it was a good idea about the bypass going in, and it just sunk. And people, I've told them before, it was pushed by not only Sleckman, but Harrington, Sunnyside Motors, Sotley, Benson, the people that own businesses. They wanted the traffic, and that's what killed it. So now, at the hearing, there's a friend of mine that's on the Central Mass Regional Planning. He got up and, and he was, kept on being cut. And he says, I am tired of this. You are going to listen to me. And he started talking about the bypass. At the end of that, they all started cheering the people in there. And he was very pleased that he brought it up, because a lot of people just don't know that it's been, it was on Central Mass Regional's bookshelf since 76, so.
Do they have a position on it now? No.
They took it down. Everything is good. You know, it's been scrapped.
Okay.
So anyways, I did holler, you know, you bunch of jerks. So just to let you know that I get fed up, you know, with, with things lately. And the last thing, I hate this with a passion. One second here. You son of a gun. I had. I will try to get, I, I don't know how to do it, get from here to the computer, but there's a stone wall right there, and your town line should be right above me.
My cornerstone? Where, is this on the overlook?
Yes, that's overlook in Princeton. So I went down there.
Oh.
Took a measurement. But the stone is not there. You know, that disappeared.
So that's information for our perambulator?
Yes.
Okay.
All right, we're getting excited here.
So anyways, I'll get it to you.
Thank you, sir. Yeah.
Thank you.
Up to like five, five stones so far.
Okay. Thank you.
That's it?
That's, that's it for tonight.
All right.
Good to see you, Jack.
Do you want that back? That, yes, please.
We didn't have any. We didn't have any correspondence, so if anybody would like to read our executive session.
I have two, two.
You have two things? You have two, oh, I'm sorry, go ahead. Old business. Is it really old business?
Um, kinda. Yeah, I think it is. So just a zoning board of appeals, where I'm the liaison. So Wednesday is the hearing, again, for the Finn Park. It's at 6:30. It's going to be in the basement of the community hall.
Okay.
Anyways, interesting, zoning board of appeals was a continuance until this Wednesday night. Last week, we, we had our meeting of the Managed Growth Steering Committee, two members of which are present here. We had a, we had a very good showing. We had Dick Williams, Dave George, Sean Moore, Jeff Stillings, Ron Baron from Central Mass. And we met, and we're getting to the point of preparation for any bylaw submission that we, we're ready to, to draft prior to town meeting. And so our next meeting is on February 13th at 6:30. Just wanted to put out there that we're getting close to putting together whatever the position is.
Who's the chair? It's Ron, right?
Ron, yeah, yeah.
So is it time to reach out to the new bylaw committee, who is basically Peter right now, so now he's seeing it, maybe see if he can come to this meeting so that the bylaw construction can start happening cooperatively? And I mean, really, even the bylaw subcommittee, because this actually is a planning board issue to a point. Because time is now of the essence. I mean, we're going to start talking about town meeting and what the warrant looks like really soon. And my guess is we'll want to do information sessions on this if we really have a managed growth bylaw coming up in May.
And we're meeting every two weeks on this, and so we just wanted to be transparent on where we go. So the next meeting is, is that. And any members of the board that wanted to participate?
Say that again, what's the next?
It's going to be February 13th at 6:30 here in the library.
So.
Pending location. Mike, could you check to see if it's available?
Yeah.
So you're going to start meeting every two weeks after the February 13th meeting? Is that what you're saying?
Um, yes. Yes. Uh, he's got some preliminary numbers. There's some, some tweaking in here.
Okay.
So, but.
Can he give you a date on the numbers, when, when they might be done?
Uh, yeah, well, for the next meeting, he's going to have, like, some of these aren't reflective of what has been promised to the Rutland Heights, any Rutland Heights build out, et cetera. But he's given their projections. It's still in draft form, so I don't know if we want to make it public record. So we'll just keep it as a, a work product.
Okay.
Right now. But I think as we get to the next meeting, we're going to get pretty close to whatever that Central Mass's official position's going to be.
Okay.
But I just want to say that we're, we're getting close to bylaw preparation on that. And Ron's doing a good job. He's, he's, he's been doing a good job for us. I think that's all we want to, ready to report.
Okay, thank you.
That's it. So thank you.
Oh, thank you. Executive session, two reasons to return for adjournment.
I'll make a motion that the board go into executive session for reason number two, which is to conduct strategy sessions in preparation for negotiations with non-union personnel, or to conduct collective bargaining sessions or contract negotiations with non-union personnel. And for reason number six, which is to consider the purchase, exchange, lease, or value of real estate if the chair declares that an open meeting may have a detrimental effect on the negotiating position of the public body. And we'll return only for adjournment.
Second.
Anyone? Thank you.
Stillings, aye.
Wait, I'm an aye.
Walker, aye.
Clark, aye.
To buy.